Any kind of order, please? Roll call. If you would, press your present button, please. Well?
Okay. Luke. Pete and Don.
We're good. Record and roll, please. Staff, announcements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Once I find my announcements.
I don't have them.
I know you don't. We do have a number of withdrawals I would like to point out. First of all, we have item 18, Amendment to Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Craft Distilleries. Item 19, Concept Plan for Blackberry Ridge. Item 21, Site Plan Review for the Retreat at Big East Fork. And finally, item 22, Final Plat and Variance Request for Off-Site Septic for Hillsborough Valley Addition Lot 3. I found them. Thank you very much. A couple of other things I wanted to point out. In front of you, you have this nice handout, Power of Ten. This is Cumberland Region Tomorrow's Annual Event. They hold annually. That sounds nice and redundant. But they have specifically asked that we invite the Planning Commission for this. It is free to public officials, other than parking, I would guess. But with that, it would also give you an opportunity to look at, get some different perspectives and take care of some of the CEU credits that we, continuing education credits, rather, that you all are asked to keep up with. So I would urge you to attend if you need any information or if you want me to book you and everything, I'll do that. I'd be happy to handle that for you all. Kind of another announcement I'd like to make is Mike Madison is, I guess, flying out on Saturday, and he is lucky enough to be going to the APA National Conference, at which he'll be making a presentation with Steve Tocknell and Wendy Bowler, who is a long time, who worked for McBride Del Clarion, was involved in our zoning ordinance update. But they'll be doing a presentation on the utility of traffic sheds, something that we've been working on, working with for the past 25 years. And so I think it'll be, it'll be a good chance for Mike to go to Chicago and a good chance for Mike to tell some folks about some of the things that we're doing. Lastly, John Kane came to see me this past Monday to announce that this would be his last meeting. John has served the Planning Commission since 1997. I looked it up. And has done so in admirable fashion. We are sad to see him go. But we don't want him to go without at least having some semblance of a token of our esteem. And generally speaking, you hand token of esteem's off directly rather than pass them down. So let me do that, and I'll be right back.
John, we spared all expense, unracked the paper for you.
With drum.
I think that was Sheila's idea. I think Sheila found the paper and Linnea wrapped it. And if you wish to open it, go ahead. I don't think it's ticking right now. But we do appreciate all that you've done for us and wish you a happy and productive retirement, if that's how you wish.
I enjoyed it very, very much over the years. Although I do look forward to retirement.
I understand. Well, John has the record for, I think, the most major surgeries while a sitting member of the Planning Commission. And with that, you know, John had a pretty, pretty bad surgery, I guess, what was it, John?
April 17th.
Yeah, April 17th.
Last year.
Well, you had one a couple of years ago, too, I believe, that was the...
That was the, that was the bad one. And then I had five bypasses, so...
Well, the part that's interesting about it was John told me he was having an operation, and he wouldn't, he wouldn't be there next month. And I was thinking, when he described the operation, he wouldn't be there the month after next either. But John missed the May meeting, was back at June meeting. So, you know, he was, he is and continues to be a dedicated member, and we will miss you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Consideration of Minutes, March 14, 2013. Any corrections or changes?
Most made in seconds.
Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Record to vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of the Consent Agenda. For those of you on the Commission, if you wish to pull an item for separate consideration, please say so, otherwise we'll take it a whole. Also, on consent, Agenda Item 9 has been pulled for separate discussion. Pete?
I've got a question on line 24.
You want a separate discussion?
Well, I don't have a question.
Why don't we just pull it, and we'll discuss it at that time? 24 is pulled from consent at the request of Mr. Mosley, and number 9 is already off consent. Any others? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Begin with item 3, Brins Valley Addition, Section 1, Performance Bond for Water, $163,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $24,450 until July 27, 2013. Item 4, Brins Valley Addition, Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 5, Cascade Estates, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 6, Estates of Gallant Ridge, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $220,000. Recommendation: Reduce to the amount of $176,000 and extend for a period of one year. Item 7, Ends of the Cove, Section 1, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $30,050. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $9,015 for a period of six months. Item 8, Ends of the Cove, Section 1, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $575,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 10, Security Central Storage, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $3100. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 11, Silverstream Farms, Section 8, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $37,250. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $11,175 for a period of six months. Item 12, Stags Leap, Section 1, Performance Bond for Off-Site Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $35,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $15,000 for a period of one year. Item 13, Stags Leap, Section 2B, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $30,600. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $9,180 for a period of two years. Item 14, Stags Leaps, Section 2B, Performance Bond for Water, $90,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $9,000 for a period of one year. Item 15, Stags Leap, Section 2B, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $227,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 16, Stags Leap, Section 3A, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection, $5,100. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in amount of $1,530 for a period of two years. Item 17, Stags Leap, Section 3A, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $9,000. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months. And...
Page 3.
Oh, yes. Item 23, Final Plat Review for Saddle Springs, Phase 2A, Section 7, Revised, containing nine lots on 27.94 acres located off Bethesda-Arno Road in this 3rd Voting District. This plat is in order. Staff recommends approval subject to signing of the plat by all owners in this section prior to the recording of the plat, which is my understanding that has already occurred.
Questions on consent?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Is that a second? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. PJ?
Good man.
Record to vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 18 is withdrawn. I'm sorry, go back to 9. I turned my sheet over. Agenda item 9, Separate from Consent, Kings Chapel, Section 2B, Performance Bond for Roads and Drainage and Erosion Control, locate off Murphysboro Road. Staff?
Staff visited site and noted that some improvements have been made. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of three months. Staff also requests the applicant be present at the Planning Commission meeting to advise when final geotechnical certifications will be available. Mr. Chairman, at our staff meeting this morning, we discussed this and elected to remove it from the consent agenda so that we could get the applicant in to the meeting tonight to discuss geotechnical certifications. Between the meeting, staff meeting this morning and tonight's meeting, I have been in conversations with the developer, and the developer has now provided me with the geotechnical data that I was requesting. One of the reasons we were concerned about this was the fact that this bond is now six years old and is still a performance bond, has 100% build-out. Keep it in mind that it is a very small section of roadway, but our concern was to be able to get this to a maintenance bond as soon as possible. So, having said that, and the developer is present tonight, if you do have any questions, he did meet our request to be here. Having said that, the recommendation for three months would stand, and hopefully, at that review, we should be able to get this to a maintenance bond.
Anyone have a question of the applicant? Anyone? Where is he? I think he's sitting right behind you. You have anything you want to say?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions of staff? And motion? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Is this on?
It's up there?
It's up there? Okay, thank you. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record to vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 24, Final Plat Review for, oops, I'm gonna go to that since it was on consent. We'll go back up and get to others. Well, it's fresh on Pete's mind. Final Plat Review for Silverstream Farms, Section 4B, containing 18 lots on 14.19 acres located off of Rocky Fork Road in the 5th Voting District. Mr. Mosley?
Yes, there was a question presented to me. Was this the section of the plat that had a private driveway behind it that was going to be made landlocked and they were supposed to do some improvement?
Staff?
Mr. Mosley, I'm not aware of a private drive in this particular section. It doesn't show up in the plat. I seem to recall one. I believe that this is further up, that what you reference is further up toward Rocky Fork Road. I don't believe it is, no, sir. It's not depicted on the plat, and I don't, I don't recall that it be, that it was in this section.
I might, she might handle it.
Yeah.
Definitely not. This is a very small section across the creek which ties into Section 3. The very back part of Section 3 ties into two of those streets that were extended out with the intention to add these additional lots at a later time. So, there is not.
Please, Mike, if you would do that.
Yes, sir. Well, I have it.
Joe, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll just read it off the consent agenda. This plat is in order, and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, the posting of performance bond in amount of $225,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Two, posting of performance bond in amount of $50,000 for water improvement as specified by Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Three, the posting of performance bond in amount of $100,000 for sewer improvements as specified by Metro Nashville Water and Sewer Services. Four, the execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And five, that the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on a recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to the signature and recording of the final plat.
Vote 2. Oh, you got it? Yeah, we got it up somehow. Wow. Linnea is getting better, this. Any questions of Linnea or staff? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record to vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go back to our regular standard agenda now. Agenda item 18 is publicly withdrawn.
Sorry, I haven't, I don't understand why it's withdrawn.
Staff?
Pardon?
That's the second issue.
No.
I heard you earlier say that...
Yeah, yeah, I think I know. We need to go on. I'll speak with Sheila. Okay?
Go for it. Agenda item 18 is withdrawn. This is an amendment to the Williamson County Zoning Ordinance. Agenda item 19 is withdrawn. Concept Sketch Plan Review. Agenda item 20, Non-Residential Site Plan. Site Plan Review for Arrington Retreat Amenities Center on 155.34 acres located off Nolansville Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
The applicant is requesting approval for the Arrington Retreat Subdivision Amenities Center pursuant to Section 11.03D8 of the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance. This site plan must be reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public meeting. The amenity center, which is located in open space, will consist of a 927-square-foot poolhouse and covered patio and swimming pool for the exclusive use of the residents of the development. Ordinance standards have been met, as have the requirements of Section 11.03D8. Landscaping plan has been submitted and approved by staff. Site plan is in order, and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. Number 1, posting of a performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $20,845. And 2, the revision of the stormwater maintenance agreement.
Questions of staff? Comments?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval. Will recommendations of staff?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? I hear none. Prepare to vote. You confirmed that, Holly? There you go. Record to vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 21 is withdrawn. Agenda item 22 is withdrawn. Agenda item 23 was on consent? Yes. And we have heard Agenda item 24. Agenda item 25 is Brightstone Presentation. Who is Brightstone?
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the report into the record. Brightstone serves adults 21-years-old and up that have a developmental disability. This facility, in existence since 1999, provides both vocational and life-training skills for their students. The current facility is located within Franklin's corporate limits. Over the past year, representatives of Brightstone have been discussing with staff their vision for Brightstone's future and how that vision might be realized in Williamson County in a campus-type setting. To that end, staff is in the process of developing a series of zoning text amendments that seek to address the issues raised by both staff and Brightstone's representatives over the past year. These amendments are scheduled to be considered at next month's meeting. Due to the rather specialized services that Brightstone seeks to provide, it was believed prudent that representatives of Brightstone be afforded the opportunity to brief this body prior to formal consideration of any amendments. Such a presentation should go some distance in providing all parties an understanding of Brightstone's vision and mission. And, Mr. Chairman, representatives of Brightstone are on hand tonight, and I believe do wish to address the Commission.
Thank you very much. My name's Dick Wells. I'm the chairman of the Brightstone Board. I'm one of those very fortunate 30-year residents of Williamson County, one of those people that moved here from somewhere else and fell in love with it and wished I'd have been born and raised here. Probably a lot of you are just like that. My wife feels like y'all spent 200 years getting it ready just for her. Brightstone is a special organization. I want to thank you for giving us this time tonight. We are gonna be, we're not gonna take a long time, and I know you're very happy that this is not at the end of a three-hour marathon with angry crowds and things like that. We are very happy about that also. Brightstone does serve adults with developmental disabilities. As you know, the schools provide a lot of things for students with developmental disabilities, but once they're adults, frankly, they can be really on their own, the adult and their family. We've been here a long time. We provide a lot of services, but we have a bright future that our founder and executive director's gonna come tell you about it a minute. But we need your help. Everything we want to do is already permitted in Williamson County. It's just the way the regulations are written, it's not permitted in one location. And that's really the essence of what we've been working with Joe and his staff on for some time, and that'll be the essence of the recommendation that they bring to you for next month's meeting. So, we're a Williamson County organization. This is where our heart and soul is. This is where we want to remain, to continue this very, very important service that we provide. So I'd like to introduce Brenda Hawk. Brenda is the one with the vision. She's the founder of Brightstone. She's our executive director, the heart and soul, and she's gonna come and just share in detail a little bit, but not in long detail, exactly what it is we do. Thank you very much.
Thank all of you for this opportunity to be here tonight, and I want to thank Joe, especially for your concern for this citizenry of our county and beyond who have very special needs, for Tom Magley's help, Dick Wells' help in input and guidance. Many of you are already acquainted with Brightstone. I see familiar faces around the room, but I'm very privileged to be able to share with you tonight about Brightstone adults and their families who live each day, probably with more challenges than most of us realize in a lifetime. So I hope you'll leave here tonight knowing just a little bit more about Brightstone, how and why did we actually begin in the first place, where we are today, what is our future, future vision, and how you, as county leaders, can help. So, why did we begin, Brightstone? And I hope you're able to see that, everybody? All right, we're rolling. Well, a little story. I was a teacher at Franklin High School, had been for several years. One of my parents was sitting with me in my office in tears and desperate. She had a 21-year-old son that you see pictured above. I was his transition teacher and had had him in high school for his last five years. Now we were at exit time, and it was the end of his schooling career, which you probably know is from age 3 to 21. And in our school system, we do a very nice job in special education in meeting the needs. So here is this parent I'd known for five years and never seen her so upset. This was a new time for her, but it wasn't new to me. I experienced that every May, when it was exit time for a 21-year-old to leave school. So, why did she have these tears? Well, the tears were not tears of joy, we're going off to college, or tears of sadness, now you're gonna go into the future, and we're not gonna see you at home very much anymore. No, it was, she was crying for the loss of that future, for her son and for her family as well, because you'd see there'd be no college, there'd be no career, there'd be no moving out, no getting married. What they faced was a lack of opportunities for their son, a lack of opportunities for work, for social integration, for some continuing education, and for the ability to learn some independent living skills. Her son would join what was then the other 71% of young adults leaving our Williamson County Jobs Program, who would find themselves living at home with their parents, no job, no prospect of a job, and no opportunity for post-secondary college or training school. So, Brightstone opened its doors in 1999 to help meet this ever-growing need. With four adults, some very brave parents, and a volunteer staff in donated space, we began. We began teaching not only job skills, but also productive work habits in our job training program and entrepreneurship. The adults learned to make very marketable products, handcrafted items, for which they were very, very proud. We began classes in functional academics, as well as provided community activities and opportunities to participate and continue in Special Olympics. Brightstone continued to grow to such an extent that by 2005, we were experiencing a population expansion, and the need for more job training areas, more staff training, support for a variety of disabilities walking in our door, more space, more staff. So with the help of this very caring community, we broke ground in 2005 for our first facility, specifically built to meet the needs of these special adults. And in January 2007, we moved in to 140 Southeast Parkway Court in South Frank, the part of Franklin, where we enhanced our program and were able to add many new aspects and new students. It was an amazing day for these families who came to see this next step begin. Then it was down to business. The job training area grew immediately. With this new facility, we're now able to offer instruction in ceramics, consumable dry mixes, painting not only terracotta clay pods, but many other beautiful gift items, designing and fulfillment of greeting cards, teaching recycling jobs, clerical jobs. The functional academic and daily life skill classes now offered opportunities for our students to learn how to grocery shop, to learn how to cook with a nutritional consultant on staff, learn computer skills, learn to be a good citizen as active participants and volunteers in this community. Part of our concept of providing for the whole individual means providing a comprehensive and health and wellness program for which we're very proud. Exercise and recreation therapy are a part of each student's day, every day. You'll find our adults participating in community sports as well as Special Olympics. We've even began a specialized yoga instruction class, all under the very careful and continuous watch care of a full-time LPN. Brightstone offers several unique therapies, such as pet therapy with certified therapy dogs, music classes with a chorus, a percussion choir, and a hand chime choir, and boy, do they love to entertain. Transportation is always a challenge, but Brightstone does provide a route into northern Williamson County and back. Others ride our local Franklin trolley and mid-south transit. So, where does that bring us to today? Well, we're all right here, all the growing numbers of us, but we're continuing to try to provide the very best services in collaboration with Belmont University, Vanderbilt University. We have interns at Brightstone. We're trying our best to stay on the cutting edge of how to better train individuals with autism, or individuals who have varied learning styles. We are learning about more syndromes than we ever knew existed, because they live right here in Williamson County. But guess what? We're full, full to capacity. We can take no more students. Our waiting list is growing exponentially, all of this while families are waiting desperately for help. Our current waiting list right now, I checked before I came, is 23. It was 22 yesterday. As hope wanes, the current waiting list, I'm sorry, I've gotta get my cell correctly here. So what is the future for these adults and these desperate families? Well, the current waiting list for government services through the Medicaid waiver program in the state of Tennessee is up to 40... in the state of Tennessee is up to 4,500. And that number is growing every day. So as hope wanes, the funding sources continue to decline, and we're hearing it even today in the news, the cutting of Medicare and Medicaid and Social Security. The alternatives for these families are for them to continue providing care in their home regardless of the loss of their own job or how aging they may be as the parent, and regardless of how emotionally or socially deprived this adult living in the home with this aging parent might become. Some are eligible for the Medicaid waiver program, but there are still 4,500 on the list ahead of them. They can move out of the state of Tennessee. There are campuses and programs like this all across the country. We have visited approximately 20 of them and have been just amazed at the fabulous resources that are available. Brightstone now has six adults who have moved out of state for services because they could not attain them here. The family can access the foster care system, or they can move into a nursing home. Not a pretty picture. Brightstone wants to be a bright idea for a brighter future. We want to be, number one, part of the solution. And secondly, we want to be part of the resources for these families and these adults in what they choose for their life. And right now, that choice is being very verbalized to me by a horde of parents. They want a safe, secure environment. They want a bigger facility so that more students can come. They want more opportunities for their individual to be able to do life. So, it might look something like this on a campus. Envision a beautifully landscaped campus with several work and training areas, aesthetically built to meet all regulations and requirements, but within the framework of the life needs and desires of the adults themselves. Beautiful, sustainable, teaching homes where adults could continue learning how to live independently, at least to their own potential. A campus built specifically for them to manage and maneuver as they live life and continue learning with their peers, even if they may need some assistance to do that. Stylish and contemporary and beautifully decorated teaching homes for home living skills, with plenty of light, living area, and room for recreation for their friends as well as family. A place to continue a healthy lifestyle with indoor recreation as well as outdoor, with an adult equestrian program that just shouts Williamson County, and with a view that says welcome to Tennessee. All within serenity that helps our adults to experience calmness, and with a faith that builds assurance and self-esteem. Why do we want to build Brightstone? For them. Very simply, for their happiness. Because whether they have a part in a play for the very first time in their life, or they enjoy riding the road with their family, we think they're all winners. I thank you for letting me share this a little bit about Brightstone, but I'd like for you to hear from the heart of what this need really is. So I'd like you to hear from a parent of this young man you're seeing right now, Ms. Peggy Moss.
Hello. How are y'all? Thanks for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. It's a real privilege. And I know y'all love Williamson County. I love Williamson County. And my name is Peggy Moss. I'm married and we have three children. I have two older daughters, Kelly and Sandy, who are grown and live in this area. And Al, our son, is 27. He has Down Syndrome. He also has some autistic type tendencies. He's non-verbal, so he's a much lower functioning than a lot of your typical Down Syndrome. He's probably around five or six years old developmentally. And you know, when your children are born, you have a dream and a vision of what you want for them, you know? And for our daughters, we knew who had a dream. We knew what to envision and what we hoped for. With Al, when he was born, we weren't quite sure how to expect and how to dream and what to hope for for him and for his future. One thing we did is we heard that Williamson County had a tremendous educational school system, not only for our daughters, but also special needs-wise. So, we said we wanted to do everything we could to get into this county's system, and so we did. So really, Al is what brought us here initially because y'all have such a great, you know, Williamson County has such a great special needs program as well as for our daughters. Let's see, I want to stay on track so I don't stay too long. But after the Williamson County school system, what was next for Al? Well, with our daughters who live here, they have jobs, they're happy. What we want for all of our children is to be happy, to be loved, and to be loved, and to be fulfilled, and to be productive. That's what we want for our children. And that's what we wanted for Al. And so, the day came after Brenda said, after the school system ends, the day that we dreaded came. And so we took Al and we went around and we visited some places for Al. He's not high enough functioning to work at Kroger's. I love these places that give them jobs, but Al's not high enough functioning to do that. So we said, well, what do we have for Al? So we went and we looked at different programs. And quite honestly, what we saw, as we would leave, I would discuss the fact I probably would need to, my heart was to stay home, to quit my job and to stay home with him because it was not a place, anything that looked like a place I wanted him to go. And then when we walked into Brightstone, it was like a breath of fresh air. It was just like a cup of cold water. And I said, this is the kind of place that I would go and get a job to give him an opportunity to have a day at Brightstone and to have his life lived out there where he can grow and learn and continue to be productive, and to be loved, and to know he's safe and he's in a good environment, in a clean environment, in a place where he's cared for and he wants to go. Quite honestly, the reason we even came and visited Brightstone was because one of the clients who go there asked us, please bring Al. We love it. It's the greatest place. You're going to love it. You've got to come see it. So that's why we went. And so anyway, we love Brightstone and we're very thankful for the vision that the parents before us went and had and set up. And so Brightstone was in place when it was time for Al to have to make that decision. So thankfully, we got Al into Brightstone. And he's, you know, Al, as you can see, you know, we call him Prince Al because he lives a prince life, you know? He's the man. Everybody in our family, we absolutely love him and adore him. We take him to church. He's involved in the community as much as we can get him in there. But you know, at our church, he doesn't have his own special Sunday School class. He goes to class with Don and I. And his friends are our Sunday School class members. That's our age, y'all. That's not his age. And when he goes to Brightstone, that's his peers, that's his friends. And they love each other. I would challenge any one of you to go by there and watch them interact. They love being together, they enjoy one another, and it's a great environment, learning environment and a fun environment. So he loves going there and it's a great, it's a great place for him. But the question is, we met that challenge. Now the next question we as parents have to consider is what happens when we die? Or what happens when we get too old to take care of Al? As I said, my daughters live here locally. Let me help you kind of think a little bit about your own situation. I don't know where y'all are, but do we have aging parents? Many of us have aging parents. They may have to go into assisted living or even nursing homes. Well, what if the only place that you could find appropriate that you would be pleased with for your parents was in Kentucky or Mississippi or Texas? And that's where you had to put them? How often would you get to see them? How often would you get to go by and pick them up and take them to the movies or go out to eat, or bring them home for birthday parties or family events? You know, I will say that my daughter, Sandy, my youngest, when we took her off to college, she was so excited. And we moved her into the dorm and she was so pumped. And just before we left town, we stopped by Little Market and we went in and she grabbed a Coke and she saw an orange drink. You know, Al loves orange Cokes. And she started crying. And I said, what are you crying about? She said, because I'm going to miss Al. I said, well, aren't you going to miss me? And she said, well, sure, I'm going to miss you, but Mom, I can call you and I can talk to you on the phone, but I can't talk to Al. He can't talk. He's going to be too far away. Well, if he has, if they have to go to Kentucky or to Mississippi or somewhere far away to be able to keep him in the family, keep him involved, to keep him out in the community, to take him to church, just try to understand where we are as parents, how desperate we want something close by. Here, in Williamson County, let me just tell you, the special needs adults, the special needs community blesses the community. We are fortunate and blessed to have special needs adults. If you ever get to know them, you will fall in love with them and you'll find how blessed we are to have them among us. So I encourage you to keep them here, keep them in Williamson County because they really do, they really do bless us. And it says a whole lot for the hearts and the people of Williamson County as well to have that reputation that we embrace the special needs population. So I just ask you, if you would, to please consider this because it's near and dear to our heart. And I thank you for your time.
I'm fortunate that I've had two healthy daughters. And I have three healthy grandsons. Most of you are probably like that. I'm also fortunate that I know John and Jack and Kate and Kelly and Al. They're special, just like my own are. Williamson County is a special county. The Brightstone campus is going to be a special place. It's going to be a place you'll be proud of and you will say, I am glad this is in Williamson County. It's a Williamson County kind of place. A special county, a special place for special needs. I promise you, you will not regret making it possible for us to do this in this county. I would really invite any of you, if you haven't been by our facility here, to go by. You will, as Al's mom said, you will fall in love with, I call them our Brightstones because that's what they are. Thank you so much for letting us come tonight. Joe, thanks to you again. And we look forward to being back next month and we'll be able to ask, answer questions, anything that, anything that you have. But thank you so much.
Any other business? I hear none. Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you.